August 11th, 2022 order. We have a quorum of at least 10 members present. Looks like 11 now with Commissioner Shmuel joining us. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from July 9, 2020. I believe Member Pearson sent those out on Tuesday of this week via email. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Steve, thank you for doing them.
You're welcome.
I move to approve the minutes that submitted.
We have a motion from, we have a motion from Jack Pepper to approve the minutes and a second from Member Tim Waren. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is approved. Next item on our agenda is swearing in of guests wishing to speak or present. It's like we have our usual suspects with us this morning, so I'm going to assume that there's nobody who needs to be sworn in. Next item, announcements and updates. Does anybody have any announcements or updates to share? Okay, moving right along. Next item, new business. Letter of support for the Athens Conservancy's Carthage Township Acquisition Report or Project, excuse me, Carthage Township Acquisition Project. Jesse, do you have anything to share on that?
Yeah, I sent a map with the agenda. So what they're, the Athens Conservancy is submitting an application to, for Clean Ohio funding, and they're calling this project Deep Hollow, Dark Skies. It's in Carthage Township. The Township Trustee supports this project. The Athens County Commissioners have already issued a letter of support for this project. There's very little public land in Carthage Township. You're pretty much limited to the Desa Nature Preserve. So everyone sees this as a positive, and they also said that there's a really nice rid line without light pollution on the property.
I just, I brought it up on our screen for everybody to see. Jesse, how many acres is that, did you say?
No, I honestly, I'm not sure.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, we, I think this, we worked with, I think the Morris, the Morris Reserve looks familiar to me from a lot split that we did several years ago, working with them, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, they have acquired that already.
Okay. Do any members have any questions about this? Do we need, we probably need to make a, this will be a letter coming from the Regional Planning Commission, Jesse?
Yes, that's what I was envisioning.
Okay, letter of support.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We can draft that and get you to sign.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, for the Athens County Regional Planning Commission to submit a letter of support on behalf of the RPC to the Athens Conservancy as they request this land acquisition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion is approved. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda, old business. We'll start with our updates on our continuing discussions, the first being the US-50 Corridor Sewer Expansion Project. Commissioner Eliason, do you have anything to share this morning?
We are in the process of looking at new options with a new engineer. Right now, it looks like that we'll probably build it in phases, but we've got to have some final approvals from USDA before we go out, back out to bid for the third time. But it looks like it's positive, it's close. We're going to have to probably change our direction with, starting with charging some user fees in advance to help with the planning money. But we, we've got a process of evaluating everything with the USDA and our engineer before we go forward, but that's the plan as it looks like now. We had hoped to go to bid sooner to try and close the low-interest rate loan. That was out there, but that's not going to happen. We've got to do a couple other things before we can get that done. We've got to get some approval from the National USDA Office as opposed to just the state office because of the change in scope of the project. But at this point, it's still our intent to build the project in its entirety, not providing that it's a affordable, and that's the direction the new engineer is following, so.
Lenny, you might have said this and I missed it, but are you, you're anticipating at this point this would be earth moving starting in 2021, spring or?
In the spring at the latest, you know, depending if we can get out to bid in, you know, it's early September, we still have some construction season left this year, but it most, most likely it's going to be spring of next year before we start moving dirt.
And do any other members have any questions or comments about this project? Any other members, any people present? Okay, if not, we'll move on to electric aggregation.
Uh, is, if Luke's not on?
He is, he is not, Chris.
Uh, I guess the only thing to report is that we have the Village of Syracuse on the ballot for the fall, and that's down in Mex County. And then also, we have changed it so that we can have solar customers, and we've, we've run into some technical issues with that. If you have a solar system that is pretty much taking care of your complete electrical load, it's, uh, it was created in a situation where people were losing some credits and from AEP Ohio. So we're sorting that out, and we're going to make sure that if you are one of those people, we get you made whole and such. Also, I just got a text from Luke that he is trying to join the meeting, so I think that's it for electrical aggregation.
Okay. Well, if Luke makes a meeting, we'll, we can, we'll catch back up with him during our roundtable. Thank you, Chris. Next item is the Athens County Land Bank.
Uh, well, let's see. Things are moving along, and we're waiting to get the SEMA project done in Trimble. There was a, kind of hard to get a commercial appraiser, but I think we've got that figured out, and that's a big chunk of properties. There's just been continuing foreclosure process and getting more properties. There's a land bank conference coming up in September. So yeah, just steady issues, basically.
Thank you, Chris. The Town, Athens Township Plains Zoning and Land Use Plan.
Yeah, a week ago Friday, I took all the information necessary to submit to the Board of Elections, the text and map for the proposed zoning in the plains. So as soon as the Board of Elections certifies that, it'll be on the ballot coming up in November. So we made, we made the deadline, even though we had some complications with meetings being postponed because of the health emergency, but we still worked our way through that all right. So it will be on the ballot in November.
Thank you, Steve. Age-friendly initiative, I think is the next item on our agenda. I think Jesse sent out an attachment to the agenda this morning.
Yes, and I think where we are with that is they identified domain leaders for each, each one of those nine domains, and we're looking for experienced experts and anybody that's willing to serve in, on one of those domain committees.
Let me see if I can pull that up for us really quick, Jesse. Got a million windows open here. One second, everybody.
Paul, this is Luke. While you're doing that, I, I'll pop up the link, I can give some quick updates on the SOPEC figures, get some breaking news. Carbon feed collections, we have, finally have one full month, so that plus a few days in June results in $11,833. In addition to that, SOPEC's board approved two grants that impact Athens County. One is $20,000 for EMS station to put solar on the roof as part of the net zero concept and, or the, yeah. And then the local match going to the city for the AP battery backup system for the water treatment plant was approved for the amount of $28,167.
Thank you, Luke. Was there anything else?
That was it. Chris covering Syracuse, that's the other big news for us, that they'll be considering aggregation on the ballot this fall.
Okay, thank you. Just jumping back to the age-friendly Athens planning really quick, I pulled up the, if you can see it on your screen, depending on how big your screen is, the-
Corporation line of City of Dayton runs along, more or less along the northern boundary of the river, the north bank of the river, and then north of there is Harrison Township.
Can you please mute whoever that was? Thank you. The, for the age-friendly Athens program, we have, as Jesse mentioned, there's a series of domains that have been identified that we're going to do age-friendly planning to improve quality of life for seniors in Athens, Athens County. We are looking for volunteers, especially older Athenians who might be interested in participating in one or, one or more of these domains. We do have a lot of volunteers and professionals around the county that are already working on this, but if any other members of the Regional Planning Commission are interested, by all means, reach out to me or Jesse and we can get, get you connected with it. The more, the better for this type of a planning project. It's a big endeavor countywide, including the villages and the cities, and it's a really important issue that we've been working around for, for years, I would say, but haven't really been working in. And so it's exciting to see this all coming together. It's going to be a, we anticipate this being a multi-year project.
I'm going to be coming to village council meetings to talk about this, just to make sure that it's on everyone's radar, but if, if any of the townships would like me to come to a meeting and talk about it, or take this yourself, Township Trustees, and feel free to get this information out there. We will be doing an assessment phase, and that's what we're, that data will be really influential in what planning outcomes are created. So we really want to make sure that we get good response rates on those assessments, which is going to be some sort of survey, combination of survey and data collection process. So we'll keep the group updated as that, that rolls out.
Does anybody have any questions about it? Okay. Moving along, we will jump to our next item, which I believe would be COVID-related updates, old business. I see Jack Pepper's on the line. Jack, you may be muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can, Jack.
Great, so, um, good, all, all good news for now coming out of the Health Department. We, you know, we see a, continue to see a decline in our, in our numbers from early July, which is great. We ran a testing clinic last Friday on the plains, had 515 people come through, two positives out of that 515, one of which was someone who had already been positive and was just curious if they would retest positive or not. So only really one new case that came out of that testing block for us. We are going to be back at the high school tomorrow from 1:00 to 6:00, offering the same service. I think that that will be the last pop-up test in the county for, for some time. So if you know folks that are interested, make sure that you, you get the word out that we'll be at the, the high school from 1:00 to 6:00, doing no cost, no symptom-required testing. And we continue to work with all of our local partners, particularly our education system right now, in the planning process for return to school. So very busy here, but, but very happy that we have seen a fairly significant decline in our, our numbers since early July.
Thanks, Jack. Does anybody have any questions or comments about this as well? Okay. Moving forward, we will go to next item on the agenda, which is the County Planner's Report. And if you've got your agenda open, it's on page two of that document that Jesse emailed
Good morning, everyone. For bikeway and trails, the Chancy Bike Path Extensions Designs moving forward, there will be, we will need to make, the Commissioners will need to make some more design decisions as they're working through that design, learning more about the area and what we're going to have to do to not create backwater. The Bailey's Trail System, I just got word from ODNR this morning that the Donville Trailhead will actually bid in a couple weeks. So I believe they put that on their website. The Hocking, Hocking River Water Trail, we got a paddling enhancement grant put in at the Geisville Park, and having progress with finding some volunteers to either own or maintain that. So we've got a couple options, so things are looking good there. For the floodplain, I've got the CCU mining proposal for floodplain in Trimble Township that's been sent to a third-party engineering firm to review the, the development in comparison to the H&amp;H study they submitted for that ASAM. As for Athens County Together, I'm reaching out to team leaders and talking to each team just to kind of see where folks are and what might be a good way to, to get that program rolling out here before the end of the year. And that's about it, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Okay. If there's nothing for Jesse, we will move on. Thank you, Jesse. Next item is city, village, and township reports, and we'll move around the screen based on who I see in my top left, and that would be Commissioner Lenny Eliason. So we'll start with Lenny and the Commissioners. Lenny, do you have any items?
We're going to be opening up the annex next week again. We had closed it down for a few weeks, but the plan is to get it back to normal operations next week, and that's all I have.
And Commissioner Shmuel, do you have anything?
Um, yeah. Yesterday, I worked up in Trimble Village of and worked with Mayor Doug Davis, and we did a cleanup of a, potentially a land bank project, but it's that kind of work of addressing kind of like trash and poverty and health is something that, you know, the land bank has done a lot with, but I think that we need to do more in the county. And, you know, there is this idea of trying to create a, maybe an environmental court where we can, you know, intervene with, with these situations and, and, you know, get people moving in a healthier direction. So I know, like, Steve Pearson's done a lot with this around the township and, and different roles he's had, but there's a lot of need for it. So like, we filled up this 30-yard dumpster of trash in like a couple hours. We had volunteers from diversion and from the community, and it was a big success. The gal that's involved with this house, you know, trying to get her some, maybe some substance abuse help and stuff like that. So it's, it's complicated with like the people that are involved with these, these houses. So working on a coalition with HAPCAP, Job and Family Services, Rural Action, to, to try to make progress on this really tough topic in the county, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Lenny. Nelsonville, City Manager Scott Frank, do you have anything, Scott? Welcome back.
Good morning, everyone. Lots of stuff still happening in Nelsonville. We're wrapping up the, the grant that we got last year for the poly projects, the sidewalks, and that's all coming to an end, and it's turned out really nice. Everybody's excited for the, the improvements around. Our wastewater treatment plant is still ongoing. Chestnut Street, as soon as you come into town, is literally caving in from curb to curb, and it was kind of expected, so that continues to go down as we put the new trunk line in. And we're also getting ready to close on Phase Two for the wastewater treatment plant, so that'll be the next step moving forward, actually out at the site and starting to clear that out and, and move forward. We were lucky enough to get another grant to put in more water upgrades next year, so right now we're looking at replacing all the water meters and bases and such in Bucktoe, along with new meters with radio read and so forth. So, and then expanding that into the city of Nelsonville as well. So all in all, still lots and lots of construction happening here, all good stuff, and, you know, we continue to move forward. So that's about all I got.
Thanks, Scott. Trustee Steve Pearson. Steve, good morning.
Good morning. I'd kind of like to comment back on what Chris mentioned there just a few minutes ago. Any Township Trustee or Board of Trustees can use Higher Revised Code 50587 to clean up a property that's cleanup trash, old mattresses, cut the grass, that's the boilerplate section. It's a little cumbersome because it requires a bunch of notifications of every, of the property owners and anybody who has a lien on the property. So there, there can be a lot of times, there's a lot of certified letters that have to go out. You can also, if you can't reach the people, you can advertise it in the newspaper, and I believe you have to do that twice. The, the zoning proposal that's coming up has a section that basically mirrors that 50587, but those, that will be a penalty that you'll go to court for, so there'll be a financial penalty involved. The judge won't necessarily order a property cleaned up. But with the trustees, if you use 50587, you can actually clean it up, send the property owner a bill if they don't pay it, file it with Jill Thompson at the Oders offices in assessment in the fall. So we'll have two different mechanisms then if the zoning commission, I mean, the zoning plan passes, we'll have two different ways to address it. I have, for example, right now, what I would call a dictionary textbook, public nuisance or attractive nuisance right behind the park on the plains, and I'm in the middle of trying to track down the property owner who's moved and not left a forwarding address. So there are mechanisms out there, it just takes a little time, and I think if more of the trustees, for example, would get familiar with the process, it could be something actually we talked about too at a countywide trustees meeting, because in my mind, the prosecutor's office could just give us a boilerplate, you know, set of procedures to go through, and then everybody could use it to be, you know, it'd be more consistent, less cumbersome, I think. So that's just a comment on that. Another thing that I've done here recently, the Elm Street Project, which is a TAP grant-funded rebuild, rehabilitation of Elm Street, which is essentially an entrance into the high school. The plans have come back from the engineering firm, preliminary plans, I have those posted at the Township website if anybody would like to look at them, athenstp.com, and there's going to be a little tab that says projects, just click, click on that, and then there'll be a, it'll take you right to the plans to look at the proposal. Five-foot wide ED compliant sidewalk, curb and gutter protection of the sidewalk, no additional land other than the use of the 40-foot right-of-way, LED streetlights, ADA compliant intersections, area drains in the areas not under pavement, so that whole area will be drained out to the storm sewer and out of the main drag at 682. So that's a 2022 project that ODOT will administer, so hopefully we'll be able to get that in And the last thing I have too is the trustees just approved Tuesday night the, the amended annexation agreement with the city for about 25 acres, the old Hope Dairy Farm, 25 acres of it, which basically runs from Lurig Road over to Vor Ridge, and from 682 back to the little creek that runs at the toe of the hillside there. So that's an amended agreement between the city and the Township for annexation. The reason was it's a brand-new survey, new perimeter survey, so rather, what it did was it substituted the existing meets and bounds legal descriptions and the tax plans that were originally submitted for the exhibits in the agreement. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Steve.
I do have one question while I'm up, if I could. People asking me about the horizontal boring that's going on on 682, does anybody know what, what that project is about? It's on the, it's on the 682 right-of-way, started basically down by AEP's office, and they're up probably two-thirds of the way, three-quarters of the way to the plains now. I just wondered if anybody knew what that was.
Is that part of the, the fiber that's being laid down?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was going to be my guess, I just wanted to check on that. So that's that main, for that huge project, right, Chicago to DC?
Correct, yeah.
I don't know how many miles that is, but if it's go, if it takes them as long as it is to just climb the hill to get to the plains, it's going to take quite a while. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Mayor Patterson, do you have anything this morning?
I, just a couple items. The Richland Avenue Pedestrian Passageway, since Ohio University is going to go, you know, pretty much virtual for the first part of the semester, we've decided that we're going to stop that project completely, just leave Richland Avenue as it is. I'm kidding.
Sounded good.
It, it's, Lenny's heard that already. What, it's coming along nicely. The, the, at this point in time, the passageway will be open to pedestrians within the next couple weeks, I, I believe by the end of August, if not sooner, that'll be opened up. And then the road surface, it's still on track, pretty much on track to be completed by mid to late September. My, my best guess is it'll be late September that that will be opened up for vehicle traffic as well. It's a, it's a great project, not that it hasn't had a few hiccups along the way, but it's still a good project. The, had a little bit of a success with the Stimson Avenue project, we're being kind of bounced around by AEP with putting the utilities underground. AEP is finally moving forward with that to where we'll get those underground, and, oh, the, the last thing I wanted to share is that the rezoning of the properties between Campbell, going back to Athens Molden Machine, which are zone B3, the rezoning would be M for manufacturing, that would be between Elliott all the way up to the Jackie O's taproom and to include the taproom, but it would not include anything north of Campbell, which is basically Campbell to Stimson Avenue, that'll stay B3. But it went through the Planning Commission, City Planning Commission, and now it's before council, so we're hoping to get that done so that we will continue to see some improvements in the ATCO building with Athens Molden Machine.
Thank you, Mayor. Arian, since you're, as a council member, do you have anything to add from the city's perspective?
Um, yeah, the, just to echo what the mayor was saying, that there was a lot of support for- Um yeah, the uh just to echo what the mayor was saying, that there was a lot of support for that rezoning, seems to make sense. Um and a good use of space and opportunity, a lot of opportunities there. Um from county board of DD perspective, we are doing our slow reopen starting on Monday, the seventeenth. Um our schools reopening uh in a very limited way, the twenty seventh. Uh we are bringing students into the building, uh but only one student per classroom. We have very small school here, as many of you might know. So at any given time, we want to, we will only have seven students in the building. Um that's just because online learning exclusively will not be sufficient for the students that we serve. So it was decided that we would do that and um we hope that goes well. I was hoping the engineer was going to hang around because I had a question about the bridge work happening here on uh fifty six. If we had any update on the timeline, does anyone know? Still September?
Bob Hetty's on the call. I'm not sure he's muted right now, but maybe if Bob, are you there?
Yes, Paul. Um no, we don't. We haven't heard anything from ODOT. Um I know they had some issues with beam delivery last week, but I don't have any updates. We can check and see if we can get get an update for the group.
If you don't mind, I'd appreciate that. We're just curious for transportation purposes. Thank you. That was all I had.
It's a fun detour, I imagine. Uh Bob, since
out on Lavelle Road and check it out sometime.
Yeah.
I did. We don't recommend taking our buses down to Lavelle.
Bob, since we're on city projects and updates, do you have anything else to share?
Yeah, Paul. We've got quite a few projects going and some getting ready to get started. So the passageway, as the mayor mentioned, on track and I think it's going to look great here. We're getting the brickwork done and some of the lighting inside. So it'll be a pretty neat project when it's complete. Um annual paving, we got started there at the roundabout at Richland Avenue. That work should all be complete. Uh in September, you'll see some work on Palmroy Road and Mulligan Road. Uh Palmroy up at the city limits, we're going to try to fix some of that poor pavement there in the long view. Um East State Street, uh been some restriping going on there. It should be completed. Kind of a continuation of the East Street, East State Street project from last year and also to accommodate uh the signal at Menard. That signal will go into Flash, I believe the twenty first, and be active on September first. Um don't have any update on Menard's opening, but that's the current for that skit, that signal. Uh Northwest Bike Path Fur is about the stopping point until they can come back and remove some bat trees, but then it'll be completed in October. Um Columbia Avenue through our last FEMA project from two thousand eighteen should wrap up in the next two to three weeks. Um that's moving along nicely. Grant Street Sidewalk, uh that was safer off the school project. It's about halfway done. Uh that ties into the Stimson project for next next year. Um Stimson, we had the pre-construction conference yesterday. So you'll start to see some work on some water lines on East State and then Columbia Gas and AEP doing work. Um Times Booster Station, we had some successful bids last month and we're working on awarding to replace that booster station. I actually relocated down the hill a little bit to be able to serve more of the south and west side of the uh areas around the city. And then de-watering, uh we're we're moving forward with some work for the for our de-watering. It's wastewater treatment plan and open bids last week. Um waiting on now the EPA to review for our loan. Being quite busy. I think next week we've got a meeting with the county to talk about uh city county projects, some of the things we need to do there, but we get at least for this year, next year, we've got some busy construction time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, uh moving on. Um Tim, Warren?
Okay, um about all we had, we we got our chip seal done. We can go Monday. We done eighteen thousand gallons, about six miles of road in about ten hours. So thanks to all the townships and some of those trucks who helped us out. Other than that, it's just business as usual.
Thanks, Tim. Uh Greg Andrews. Greg, do you have anything this morning?
No, it's just pretty much business as usual.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Uh Jack, do you have anything additional from the health department to share this morning?
Nope.
Very well. Thank you, Jack. Uh Jason Morosco, anything to share?
Uh nothing.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Um Sarah Mars Maxfield. Sarah, good morning.
Morning, everybody. How's everyone doing? I hope you're doing well. Um what I have to share from the economic development and Port Authority front is um if any of you have gone down towards um the industrial park there after Poston Road this week, you'll see that they're doing some additional soil soil borings on our property just to confirm the geotechnical um surveys for the construction that's impending. So that's going on um out at the industrial park. Um additionally, um the EDC is will be doing um uh an update to the strategic plan, the twenty sixteen strategic plan. Um and much of what we had set out to accomplish in that plan has been accomplished or is in process. And so it's time to kind of evaluate uh where we are and 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 how well we did with that as a community and set some new goals. So within that plan, um specifically, obviously the, you know, the metrics, the demographics, where we are today is very different. Um given the health emergency that we're under, um there's been a lot of changes economically. Um it and and much, much of it with um OU's layoffs. So a big portion of that plan will be focused on talent recalibration is what we say. So basically, um really looking at what is that we can reemploy um the employable workforce that was laid off so that we can keep all those community numbers in our community. Um and we also um have a subcommittee set up to explore a potential remote worker strategy. So basically um oversimplifying, but to to uh utilize the assets of the community um as an attraction effort to get workers to live here um and work remote so that we can um continue to um retain and increase our population. So that's what I have to share from from our front. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Sarah. And uh Jill Thompson, Athens County Auditor, do you have anything this morning?
Uh no, nothing to report for the auditor's office.
Okay, thank you. Uh Gary Guzman, Mayor of Ath- or Mayor of Albany. Nope, Amesville, excuse me, Gary.
Third time's a charm.
Only a couple of sips of coffee.
We had council last night, council approved a resolution to send some of our CARES money to HAPCAP for um assistance with utilities for residents of Amesville who have been affected by the COVID situation. Um so we'll be negotiating with HAPCAP on that. Thank to, thanks to Mayor Patterson for sharing some of the language that they used uh in a similar resolution that the city had. Uh we got our signs posted designating uh the village as B City USA um member, and we're going to move forward with educational programmings on that, starting um the end of the summer. Already some things on our website. Um we've got people in the village, myself included, participating in the age-friendly Athens County initiative, so we'll be moving forward with that. Uh we've been in talks with ODOT. Uh we've got uh our uh marshal is just part-time and we're having trouble with speeding on Route five fifty. We're trying to look at ways that we could slow down folks going through the village. And so we're looking at pedestrian crossing with flashers and kind of other things uh with the assistance of ODOT. And my understanding is federal hocking is reopening virtually um for the beginning of the school year, like many uh school districts are. So we'll see how that goes. Um with Amesville Elementary, not sure they they will probably bring some students in with IEPs, but we're not really sure of the details of that right now. And there's a mayor's partnership for progress meeting at noon today. So got a number of things on the agenda, but that's it.
Thanks. Thank you, Gary. Uh let's see. Miranda Kridler. Ohio University, Miranda, good morning.
Morning, everyone. Um I think everyone's probably aware by now that the university is planning to return in a phased strategy. So this first month, August twenty fourth through September twenty seventh is right now phase one, and we don't have very many students um coming back for in-person learning. There are some who are um being granted access to labs and facilities for those that have um work tied to that function um as well as the College of Medicine and a couple of other very specific programs that have some students coming on campus. Apart from that, all of our courses are going to be delivered digitally um for that time period. And then they'll be evaluating and rolling out a phase two when appropriate. Um I would add that, you know, offices like ours have done a lot of the work to kind of set things up for um safe distancing. So when the students do return at whatever point that is, you know, we've set up all of our classrooms in many of our buildings um with six foot distancing, signage, marking, reconfiguration of chairs and classrooms, just to ensure that um for the spaces where our students will be coming back to learn, uh those are set up appropriately. And I know that residential housing and other teams have um been handling the same kind of work on other facets of the campus. Um in terms of projects, we've got um the Heritage College of Medicine project continuing on West Union. Uh it's coming together. So the um plan for that facility is still um they're they have a very slight delay in their schedule, but they should still be opening at the end of the year um with that new facility. Um the Human Resources Training Center, which is right next to it, has been vacated by um the university for construction. So it's under construction now. Um and it will also serve the College of Medicine when complete. And um the other major academic project on West Union, uh the Russ um Opportunity Center, which will uh take the West Union Street Office Center, the former HDL Center, that project is still planned um to kick off in, I I believe it's April twenty twenty one. So that will convert that facility from office space to um an engineering research facility. So those are um Clippin, uh the new chemistry building next to Clippinger is also scheduled to be completed this fall. Um and I haven't heard anything about delays. I believe they're still on schedule to complete um on close to their original timeline. That will make way for the next phases of the Clippinger renovation. Any other questions? That's really all I have for today.
Thanks, Miranda. Uh let's see. Luke, Luke Solfrich, do you have anything additional to add?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. Uh one, just want to advise the local electeds um that AEP is planning to resume shut offs for electric in September. That's been um put on pause due to COVID, but um they have filed the commission to let it resume. Um I don't have a lot of details. I'll share those as I know them, but just be prepared for that. Secondly, uh we have become a host site for an American worker um this cycle through reelection. So that'll um with the intent for public education and municipal support. So um we'll have a new face in our office here in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you, Luke. Um I think that's all. I I wanted to add a couple of other things from the city's perspective that I didn't uh jump into mention while we were doing our roundtable. Uh I think three items, the first of which is that uh as many of you know, the city's been working, we've been working through a comprehensive planning process for the last couple of years. Uh we're in the final stages of getting comment and feedback on that plan. If anybody's interested in providing uh information, they can um uh we have uh uh draft documents available. I can send that out. I'll send that out to the members of the regional planning commission so you can review as well as a a survey form to give feedback on. Um another item that we've been working on is I've been in communication, as is Mayor Patterson and a few other city staff members for uh a while now with the Army after the uh US Army Corps of Engineers relating to uh our safety, life and safety concerns with the Whites Mill Dam. As many of you are aware, we've a lot, there's been at least four lives lost there in the last five years. And we are tired of that happening and we don't want that to happen again. So we've been working with the Army Corps to try to figure out how to make that part of the river safer. Um we are, uh they have prioritized that for as a project that they are trying to get federal funding to move forward with um a feasibility study to better understand what's happening in the river there, the hydraulics, et cetera, and then trying to move forward with implementation. So we don't have uh nothing's moving forward at this point. Uh the Army Corps is submitting, resubmitting that plan or that this project in September for federal funding. Uh and we're continuing to work with them to try to get this resolved. Um it's a priority for the city. I can say that as well. And the other thing I wanted to mention uh is also a lot of us uh on this call are actively engaged with the the census count. Uh we have uh we've been really focusing in the city on the off-campus student neighborhoods. Uh we're about to we do have a program we're going to be launching for the next month and a half to try to really reach out to the off-campus neighborhoods. Uh Chris Schmeele, just so you're aware, of course, as the Chair of Athens County Counts, uh I did have a conversation earlier this week with uh university communications and marketing as well as um the Dean of Students' Office, and we're all trying, we are are basically getting aligned on on our messaging to both the off-campus student, students who are current there as well as the recent alumni. So uh we've got, we're building it right now to try to to try to get that, uh try to get as much conversation out there as we can. So hopefully we see some success coming forward.
Also, we have a bunch of uh yard signs and other things. If anybody wants any of those, uh feel free to get in touch with me. And hopefully next week we can have another uh Athens County Counts meeting so we can kind of basically finish strong here.
And and we have a bunch of yard signs in the lobby at City Hall, Mayor. I'm sure you probably saw those this morning when you came in, but those uh feel free to distribute those. If you, if we want to put those in on city properties around the community, we can. Uh I was going to reach out to local landlords that we have good relationships with and see if they're willing to put some in the front yards of some of their properties and uh but those are ours to use.
I thought it was trash. I may have taken it out to the dumpster.
I know Mary Mary Nally from the university is coming to grab a handful of them this morning, I was told. So hopefully I'll tell her to, I'll tell her to go round back. And is there anybody else who uh has anything to say? Uh anybody wants to share anything else this morning?
Paul, this is Sarah. Um I have one question for the group, and that is um you may, I mean, it might not be totally on topic here, but I with the moratorium on evictions ending, are we seeing that affect any of our residents here in town? Is that moving forward locally?
Um Sarah, I can speak to that somewhat. Um I look, and you may have heard this as well from the virtual roundtable and talking with um one of the members of the virtual roundtable that there there are at-risk individuals in the city proper. Um and I I can't speak to the whole county. Um and it could move forward for sure, but we've put together that grant, as you're aware, that's at HAPCAP, it was already mentioned, with giving relief for people who may be at risk of being evicted or have their mortgage uh experience for foreclosure.
Uh on that topic of the um Kelly Haddis from HAPCAP and myself, we participated in a webinar. And it was, it's uh it was sponsored by Rethinking Homelessness. It's a national nonprofit and it was called um preparing for the oncoming eviction crisis. So uh we can, I could share that webinar link with you guys. Um it had some good strategies for uh potentially dealing with the that it topic.
Thank you. Thank you both. I was just curious about what, you know, again, yeah, what efforts were going on out there to maybe help with that situation. Thank you.
Okay, well, if um uh unless there's any additional comments from anybody, we can uh entertain a motion to adjourn, and our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September eleven, twenty twenty. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Steve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
You too.